The town administrator. We're gonna bring the board of selectmen meeting to order, full board present tonight. We have the town administrator, police chief, and we have my tele videotaping and recording for the public. And it will be uploaded on the town website.
While we're on that subject, can I just bring this up because you just mentioned the town website? Lee just showed us this mic and this is what he liked the phone that he brought up last meeting. To put a sign up at the clerk's office and.
Yeah, so this notice here says where my tax draw was going. As far as the town level goes, sixty-five percent are going to school taxes. Sixteen percent to state and county, and nineteen percent is town taxes. There's a portion on here that's not printed that I think it's another seven percent to the state, right?
No.
State.
Six.
Six percent?
Six percent. For the state education portion.
So total on the school would be seventy-one percent when you include the state. Selectmen are now working on budgets for twenty twenty-six. Agendas are posted on town website on Thursday. Okay, where did you want to post that, outside the window?
I'll type it up and somebody will see it.
You can shorten it however you want. This is just what I just wanted to get out to the people. I'm gonna post one at the library, I'm gonna ask Jen to put one at her window.
Okay. So we'll put that under public comment.
In the minutes of the last, of the last meeting, these percentages are in those minutes.
So I'll make sure they're referenced that way.
Yeah. Okay, gentlemen, I have some previous meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five as amended.
I'll second that. Lee, did you bring them?
I have the ready packets.
That's what I would've thought, there had been the first in my packet here, but.
Eddie, what do you have? You have the.
To do my agenda space, okay, here they are. Just out of order. Okay, motion been made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you second that, Mike?
I did.
Okay. Dan, you wanna make a motion for the non-public?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I'll second that motion. And after that non-public, there was a motion in public. For hiring process.
And I don't see a reason to seal these.
Neither do I either.
It's pretty, pretty non-person, pretty de-personized.
Yeah. Can the motion that when we came into public summarize the conclusion that we came to?
Correct.
I'm not sure if I called for a vote on that overall, that last one.
No, you haven't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike, you seconded that one as well?
Yes.
Okay, good job, Mike.
He did.
You seconded it.
You seconded it, David.
All right. There is a. Public notice in here about the town of Dunbarton floodplain development ordinance. Per IRS A six seventy-four sixteen as amended. Okay, read the resolution to adopt a new FEMA. F I R M S and F I S. Motion. And approve amended zoning ordinance Article ten floodplain development ordinance as written. Read clarification of resolution to adopt a new F E M A. And Firms and F I S. Page ten, motion is signed.
So Donna and I have been.
You have wording for the motion?
Can I just point out that Donna and I have been working with FEMA to get the updated floodplain maps adopted so that we can qualify for insurance for residents of Dunbarton. And there are certain steps that we have to go through.
Okay, I'll read the resolution first. Pursuant to IRS A six seventy-four colon fifty-seven by resolution of the select board. All land with the town of Dunbarton and designated as special floodplain hazard areas by the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. And its flood insurance study for the county of Merrimack, New Hampshire dated January twenty-third, twenty twenty-six. Together with Associated Flood Insurance Rate Map Firm. Panels three-three zero-one-three, C zero-five-two-zero-F. And three-three zero-one-three, C zero-five-four-zero-F. And three-three zero-one-three, C oh-six-three-five-F. And three-three zero-one-three, C oh-six-four-five-F. And three-three oh-one-three, C oh-six-five-five-F. And three-three zero-one-three, C zero-six-six-zero-F. And three-three zero-one-three, C oh-six-six-five-F. Dated January twenty-third, twenty twenty-six. Are declared to be part of the town of Dunbarton zoning ordinance and hereby incorporated by reference. Selectmen's resolution. I, David Knoll, Michael Kaminsky, and Dana Lavoy. Selectmen of the town of Dunbarton certify that the attached is a true copy of the town of Dunbarton's resolution adopting a new floodplain insurance rate maps adopted by the town of Dunbarton or selectmen.
There's.
So we just need to sign this, or is there?
He made the motion to accept the FEMA maps, which is what he read. And then the part two of this is to approve the res, uh, read certification of the resolution. Which is page ten. Is that a motion there?
That's a motion on the table, so I'll second that. With David red.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. They worked on that before you were selecting the vote for the last couple of years.
And for, for the public, I'm gonna distill it in one or two sentences. If you live in a floodplain where it's prone to flooding and it's approved by FEMA, you can be, you can buy low-cost insurance to protect your home. And this facilitates the process of being offered and buying low-cost insurance, am I correct?
Yes.
I think there are three homes in this floodplain.
But without doing that, they have no recourse. Most commercial insurance companies I know, in my opinion, would not approve the insurance for them. So it's an avenue.
It's a government-owned insurance, right?
Government facilitated.
Okay, going on to item number two, per IRS A thirty-one, colon ninety-five dash B four zero three, paragraph B. Accept a donation of thirty-three, thirty-eight point fifty for the Dunbarton Firefighters Association to purchase an LVA six hundred video unit with a charging dock for the ambulance. So it looks like it's a private donation of thirty-three hundred dollars and thirty, thirty-three, thirty-eight fifty.
And that's from the Dunbarton Firefighters Association?
Yes, they're a five oh one C three. And separate from our fire department, but a lot of the proceeds that they collect, they do recognize and take care of the needs.
Do you have the donation lien, or like?
They're actually writing the check directly to the company. They just want to make sure that we would accept the equipment if they paid for it.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Motion been made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You wanna sign it, but you've seen it, Mike? This is the other part of that building information. Okay, next thing on the agenda is Jeff Crawdell, town road agent, to discuss the twenty twenty-five remaining budget. Come on up, Jeff.
Yes, sir. Well, as you guys are aware of, we didn't secure a person at this point. We have a vacancy in highway five. So there's a substantial amount of money left in that line. And I have a little project that we need to, I feel we need to get done. And it involves gravel crushing and crushing of asphalt. We have, over the years, have built up a pretty substantial pile of asphalt that's in our Kimball Pond pit. And we are out of our crushed gravel that we use for our road projects in house and on the roads and stuff. So we, the last couple of years, we've been buying it from vendors, which isn't necessarily a bad option. But we need to use up this pile of asphalt that has to go away. And typically, we're not making a stockpile anymore. This came from a lot of little projects, like we did some parking lot work, we took it down there, the asphalt. When we do cul-works, we remove the asphalt, we take it down there. But there's a cost of taking it down there, piling it up, dealing with it, and then we have to pay to have it crushed. So it's been, we found it's more efficient when we're doing any large-scale project to have the asphalt contractor come in with a reclaiming machine, which basically is a big rototiller. It rototills the asphalt right up, you leave it right in place, and you grade it out, and it becomes part of your road bed. And it's one cost, it costs quite a few bucks to do it. And even if it's a small job, there's a, you know, surcharge to mobilize the equipment and all that. But the end of the day, it's still cheaper and it eliminates us from having any large stockpile. Having said that, that's what we gotta deal with. It's one of these things that has just been going on for a bunch of years, and we have a substantial amount. And again, it costs money to have that done. I don't know exactly what it's gonna cost, I've gotta meet with a couple of guys out there, see what the different options are. But it's typically something because asphalt being what it is crushes better in the fall or the spring. Because if in the summer, it gets gooey from the, makes sense, right? So I have been thinking about this and noticing that we had this extra money that we're not obviously gonna spend, even if we hire somebody tomorrow, we're not gonna spend all that money. I'd like to either use some of that to get this crushed, or if we can't seem to get it done by the end of the year, at least get a contract and come run it to there. The reason I'm, I know it's like, oh, we could turn it back into the taxpayers. If that's what the consensus is, that's fine. But I will be coming forward with that in my budget next year. So I was trying to do it with money that we'd already raised through taxes, and that would enable me to come back with a, basically a level budget. Whatever we funded this year, next year, identical. And that, again, if we fund.
After it's crushed, what, is it just available for your use?
It's available for our use on our road projects, putting it on the gravel roads and stuff like that. Over the years, we've crushed gravel several different times. The last couple of projects we've done, it's actually been closer to get the material from a vendor. Where they are, but the two roads we gotta work on are closer to this Kimball Pond.
It just makes something nonusable usable.
Yes, and the other thing is, we're not, let's just, I'm just gonna throw this number up. Let's say it costs forty thousand dollars. We're not gonna realize a forty thousand dollar savings in one year. That will be spread out over a number of years. It'll be less material we have to buy in a calendar year. If you follow that, it doesn't, it's not like, oh yeah, we're gonna save forty thousand next year. It'll be spread out over several years.
As you, the need arises to use it.
Exactly, exactly.
Is there a financial benefit to the town to actually use this material?
Yes, there is, but.
As gravel, as opposed to.
Yeah.
Selling it off?
Well, selling it out is complicated, nobody's gonna want it the way it is.
Okay.
They would, they would charge us to haul it away. The only time it becomes, has value is if it is crushed up. We don't have the capabilities to crush it. If we can buy the crushed gravel from a vendor, we pay X number of dollars a yard and we have to truck it and all that. This still has a cost, it's gonna be somewhat cheaper, but it's not like winning a megabucks cheaper. It basically gets rid of what we're gonna stockpile and cleans it up and recycles.
It's probably a hundred dollars a load cheaper, though.
Yeah, no, it, it, yeah, it's cheaper, yeah.
To, to actually use that, our own crush it?
Use it on, for a crushed gravel, crushed gravel base for road projects.
Ten-wheeler road loads probably three eighty or whatever, crushed gravel, so you say then probably a hundred dollars a load, which is what you're saying. It's not a huge thing, but it also gets rid of the pile.
Also, it's local. Anything, anything we truck into the town, it takes just about an hour to make a round trip. But it all comes from an outside source where when we have this available in town, it's, you know, a lot of times it's only a half hour.
Do you have more than one vendor to do this job?
Um, right now, I've only got one to, I came in to talk to and give me some advice on which direction to go. He hasn't seen what we have to do, but he has several different ways of doing it. You know, by the hour, by the ton, or by the yard, or whatever. I want him to see what's involved, 'cause it's, it's not, usually in a gravel pit, they just go in, there's a big bank in and they dig it up and they dump it, and they're crushing material and taking it away. This is a little more complicated because of where it is and all that. In the past, we've got several different prices from several different vendors and chose the one we want. The last two times we've crushed, and I can't remember how many years ago it was now, but it's, could be eight to ten years ago. We used a vendor out of Concord Frank, F L Narrell. And, but I wanted to talk to this guy, it's a little different situation, to get an idea of what direction to go in. See what he proposes, and if need be, we'll put it up to the.
How much, how much gravel would you anticipate in terms of like years of supply if this was all crushed?
Well, again, that's a tough answer, question to answer, depends on the size of the road project and how much gravel we have to use. But I would say, I think the goal to make it feasible for a vendor to move equipment in is like five thousand yards is the magic number typically. And to take that to answer your question, there would probably be three years' supply or something baby for.
Okay. 'Cause obviously you wanna, it sounds like you're not gonna generate this pile again because of the new technology of crushing.
Yeah, and yes, we won't, the asphalt's gone away, but the natural gravel pile will still be there, and that could be used, done again. And that's what the town's been doing for a long period of time, before I was road agent, since I've been road agent. But it's not something you do every year, and it's.
So you use the regular gravel down there is what he's saying as well, also.
The regular bankroll gravel.
Okay.
But this asphalt that we had to do something with, that's in a big pile, that's gonna go away.
Do you at least have enough, more than a minimums, in your opinion?
Yes, what I would do would be get a more accurate estimate of what's in the asphalt pile, and then the gravel is right behind that, I mean, they touch each other.
So now that you could.
They continue, yeah, they, right in the same place, continue.
Okay, great.
Like, so it's efficient that way. And we'll get a product we can use, and like I said, it's not gonna, we're not gonna say, oh jeez, we spent forty thousand dollars, and next year, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna recoup forty thousand dollars. It'll be spread out over so many years, there'll be less money we have to spend.
Just so Dan understands, why don't you let know where the different pits are that you use in the town?
Local ones that we use is this Mount Liam Incorporated, which is.
No, I meant town pits like Stark.
But we have a stock pit, I don't know if you're familiar with that, it's on Ray Road. That used to be a sand and gravel pit, and that's just sand now, and that is pretty well played out. The town bought, got that years ago from a guy named Charlie Little. And they set up this intricate system on getting the material out of there. And then somewhere along the line, in recent history, the last twenty years, it came to note that the Society of Protection of New Hampshire Forest had an interest in it. And they never paid attention to it, and all of a sudden they stayed and paid attention to it. And we had to come up with a, a close-out plan for doing it. The gravel had been all excavated out of there, there was no more of that. We'd used mostly all the good sand we could use, and the sand that's left is kind of a, a silty sand that really isn't good for using on the roadways, that's what we use for sanding the road, roads typically. And the section where the good sand is, they won't let us go back there anymore. 'Cause, anyway, having said that, we have another pit on, on Kimball Pond Road. And that actually was equated to the library through the same guy, Charlie Little. And a number of years ago, they did a addition on the library, I believe it was in the nineteen nineties. And he, or the town, or whatever, owned that, the library, he gave it to the library. So the town forest committee bought the land, compensated the library for the land, took, not, the town owns it, but took stewardship, or whatever you wanna call it, of that gravel pit and gave the library the money, and they enabled them to do their renovations to the library. Ancient history, you weren't even, he didn't even know where Dunbarton was. So it's, it's all got a history of that, that's what we've been doing, so we've been.
And that's active?
Yes, active, yes, it's an active ongoing gravel pit. It's not huge.
Parts would've been closed out that they used to use on Kimball Pond Road, but this one's down further.
There were several went through there, I mean, I could, you, it would be hard for you to tell where they were unless somebody pointed out. You pointed, yeah, they've all overgrown with bushes and trees and stuff, but. So it's kinda something the town's, the town's been doing it for probably seventy-five years since the need for gravel was, but.
Well, going back to that, I think that that's a, a good thing if you wanna get that cleaned up in that pit anyway.
Yes.
I think we should process it, 'cause.
Yeah, no, I, I really wanna do that.
It gets the other gravel very well, the park committee.
And it, but the, the, that, I think we're all in agreement, that's a good idea, it's something the town needs to do, and I wanna do it. It's in our thing, but the funding of it's what I'm more interested. If we could, my theory is, we've already raised this with taxes. Yeah, you could say we'll give it back to.
Well, I think we're gonna give a portion back anyway.
Yeah, but I.
It's not gonna cost a whole amount.
Yeah, no, no, but I want permission to talk about it, I don't wanna just come in and give you guys a bill. And again, it might not be able to come together between the end of the year, and we may have to income.
That would be okay.
I'm more concerned that we follow our pit policy.
Yes, yep.
And make sure there's more than one person.
Yeah, I don't, I can't, at this point, I needed a little guidance on how to set this up.
Initially, from someone like that.
Yes, exactly, and then, again, like I said, I mean, if the powers to be decide, no, we don't wanna do that, we don't want any of that surplus, we want coming back to the, the golfers, that's fine, but I will put it in my budget next year. So I, again, I was, I was saying, well, we've already raised it, and it would avoid me coming in to ask for any more money than what I asked for last year.
So just to give one last context, I guess, to this, the primary reason is to get rid of the asphalt pile.
And it also creates a product that we can use on our thing, yeah.
But, so primary, get rid of that, 'cause you'd wanna get that, rid of that anyway.
Yes.
And number two, I heard, you know, like a hundred dollar savings per load or something like that. I'm just kinda curious, if we took, I'd be interested to know what your, what the general savings would be over that time getting rid of that? So if it's five thousand, you know, yards or whatever you said, what does that end, like, out of the forty thousand, what do we end up gaining by gravel that we have? Is it two thousand dollars, is it ten thousand dollars?
Um, if you took that forty thousand dollars, maybe ten.
Okay, so you got about twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Value back if it's crushed.
Versus going and buying it on the open market.
Correct, yep, yep.
And I think that's what you're getting.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting, I'm kinda getting, like, what, obviously, you wanna get rid of the pile anyway.
Yes.
If you could say tomorrow, somebody would like just come in and do it.
Yeah.
And get rid of it, or crush it.
You make it into a usable material.
Yeah, but you're actually, you're actually gonna recoup potentially twenty-five percent of your expenditure on that.
Over a period of time.
Over, over the life of the pile.
You know, it, it's kinda hard to pinpoint that number exactly, 'cause there's, there's two other factors I, I brushed on. The transportation part. If it's further away, the trans, you buy the gravel, and then the transportation on that's longer. When it's local to where we're working, you cut that number down. And that's a variable, I mean, it's a cost-saving.
But the cost avoidance of having to buy it, you actually, you have to count that transportation.
Yes, you do, yeah, exactly.
I mean, locally, you're end up saving because of that.
And I'll maybe shoot myself in the foot here, and maybe you understand it. But that's a little hard to put an exact number on, I guess you could, but it would, 'cause a lot of times it's in-house money. It's our employee, the town truck, which we're paying for anyway, and it's time we're paying for. Yes, you theoretically, in a business world, and there's no reason you couldn't, you assess a number to that for what it costs you. What difference does it make? You know, well, that's, we have to have the truck anyway, use it for.
But it's the cost avoidance of not having to buy is really where the savings come, come from.
Paying for the trucking as well, too.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, the cost of buying it includes the transportation and all of that.
When I say buying, that's what I mean.
Yep.
And that's why Dave brought up, what do you?
All right, Leo?
Uh, Jeff, I'm just curious, so you're not gonna wanna collect any more pavement?
We're trying to avoid it at all.
What are we gonna do with it?
Well, there's several options, uh, the, the place that does the bark processing stuff, dirt doctors. They said we could bring some in there, if we were, like, let's say we were doing a cross trench and we had six or eight yards of it, we can get rid of it there.
Okay, I'm just curious, what are you gonna do if you can't get rid of that pile, you gotta go in the pile?
But if we're doing. Crumble in place, the.
Yeah, if we're doing a, like a, a section of road, let's say we're gonna do a thousand feet out here, Robert Rogers. We have the asphalt bin to come in with this big rototiller.
Right, yeah, okay.
Rototill it right there.
Yeah, okay.
And then, if you, if for some reason you had too much of that, you can gather that up and that's a usable material.
Yeah, right, right, yes, but I imagine you're gonna get some here and there.
Yes, incidental amounts, yep, yep, okay.
I'm just curious.
Exactly, yep. And that's how we got to where we got, I mean.
A little here and a little there.
Yeah, and then some parking lots.
Yeah, right.
I was just asking, is there an inflation factor in terms of gravel? Like, you're gonna have this pile around for a while, right? For three, four years, so not only.
Well, in the last three or four years, prices of gravel have gone up thirty percent.
So you even save more.
Yeah, I mean.
You potentially save more, 'cause you're not, you're not gonna use it all in the first year.
Due to this recent.
I'm helping, I'm trying to help you out here.
Yeah, influx of, influx of inflation, if it's giving all those prices. I mean, just to give you an idea.
If it lasts three or four years, you benefit more.
Just to give you an example, this vendor we used, you know, four years ago, three years ago, gravel was eight dollars a yard, now it's twelve dollars a yard.
Okay.
Because his cost of processing it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's a win.
Yeah.
You know, since you have a gravel bank.
Yeah.
Okay, so, the direction of the board is to go ahead and get that started, to get some pricing on it? And we'll see where it comes in, and we'll go from there, I guess.
Yeah.
See how much.
Just remember, December comes around real quick, where we have to encumber it.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to ask the que, if you got, if the consensus was, nope, we don't want any pile. And it's not really you want any part of crushing it, the funding of it, this way.
I'd rather fund it in twenty twenty-five now.
Yeah, 'cause it's already been raised, we felt the negative effect.
And you're not gonna consume all of your surplus anyway.
Just remember, when, when you do come up with a vendor that you like, and we all agree upon it, it's gonna be in an invoice form, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
X amount of dollars to profit, five thousand years or whatever.
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past, we just created the thing, and we typically solicit.
I'm good with it. The whole of the plan.
That's all, it was just the funding was the.
So while you're here, I think it's later in mailbox, but you said there's a picture in here.
On the bottom, near the bottom.
On the mailbox section?
Yeah, yeah.
Wanna take care of that while you're here?
You wanna talk about it now, like, Chris, Chief Chris here's got some input, too. Or are you gonna do it in public, you wanna do it non-public, or what do you wanna do? I might say some things that hurt people's feelings. You wanna attack it now?
Do you wanna do non-public at the end, or?
That's, that's fine, if that's the consensus of the board.
We'll do it the early part of non-public.
Yeah, and I'll get out of here.
And then he can leave.
Okay.
And lastly, uh, no, no hits on recruiting for your position?
No, no, I haven't had anything since the gentleman you and I.
And that never came to?
No, he decided it was better to stay where he was at, which I, it was good reasoning, I thought, from his part, I could understand it. It wasn't anything negative, it was just.
We did have one other person, but didn't have plowing now, had a CDL with no plowing experience.
Okay.
Building one through Bavona, I don't know if you've heard about it?
Well, I, last thing I heard, my son's moving to town, he's gonna call you, that's all I heard. Well, he's got a CDL, but I never, I never talked to anyone.
Yeah, I sent him the information, he said, he'd rather not, 'cause he has no plowing experience. So I suggested something with a transfer case, transfer station, that's where he might end up.
Okay, yeah, no, you, I remember we brushed on it a few weeks ago.
Okay, so that being said, gents, we'll, we'll just stay off to the end of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, mind that.
No, that's fine, I gotta be your.
We have a cemetery trustee's budget for twenty twenty-six, proposed budget to look at.
So, um, because they provided us with a level services budget. They asked me to present it to the board and if you had any questions, they can come in and I'll read it. But, uh, currently in the actual column four, there's twenty-five thousand, six oh two. That leaves about fifteen hundred dollars left in the current budget, they did say they have some outstanding bills. So there will not be that much being returned to surplus. In twenty twenty-six, column five, they're asking for twenty-seven thousand, one eleven, which is two dollars less than twenty twenty-five's budget.
I know that in looking at this budget, um, when they did their schedule last year, they laid out. Like, three-year approvals for all of the items that they were gonna work on, like in the, um. Cemetery over on, um, Dunbar Center Road.
East Side.
East Side Cemetery, they did put the loom down on the top third or top half of that. Grass is growing in really good, deer are eating in it every night. But, uh, so they are doing all their projects and I know that this budget encompasses those projects to continue on.
Right, and they did recently put out their bid for mowing, they, and they've stayed with the ASAP. They've got three or four bids and the other ones were more than almost twenty-five to fifty percent higher, so.
Oh, good.
But they wanted to do their due diligence and they ended up with ASAP.
And this one for Jeff was just a preliminary one for us.
Yeah, I had to crunch some numbers so that you can see what's in on the back, what after, um, additional potential expenses would happen between now.
It is, it appears to be enough, more than enough funding to.
Right, based on that number that he brought up.
The project.
She puts them in the basket for me so I can grab them later.
Okay, good, um, do you happen to know Lean, there were just two items here where there's zero spent actual. The mapping services and loan, weed control, is that just kept as a contingency if that's needed or?
I know that the loan, the weed control was a contingency, but the, um, mapping, I think it's what's gonna eat the remainder. They have to buy two licenses for the online viewing for, uh, Find a Grave. And that comes out of that eighteen hundred dollars. Oh, excuse me, the mapping.
Sixteen fifty.
Sixteen fifty, yes.
So they'll be spending that?
Yeah, or, uh, right around there, I think it might be a little bit less.
Okay, and is that, that's an annual thing they have to, an annual license they have to? Okay, okay, so the loan and weed though is not a contingency if they needed it, they didn't need it this year.
Okay, um. So, oh, I'm sorry, they'll, they'll be returning money then in the surplus. But you said there's one, there's, there's many bills coming in.
Correct, and that, one of them is the mapping services, which is Find a Grave, and that's around the sixteen hundred dollar range. But I think they put in a little bit of extra for training or some other services in that.
Yeah, they might return very small amount.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, last thing on our regular agenda for town business is holiday hours, Thanksgiving, Wednesday, November twenty-sixth. And Christmas Eve, Wednesday, um, December twenty-fourth.
So I've discussed this with the office staff, um, um. It's pretty quiet these two weeks during these holidays and a lot of the, and folks in the office prepare meals for their families. And they had no objections if we closed early, uh, without pay. I know that this has been, uh, brought up for discussion that might affect other departments that have unusual hours. So they were okay if, if the board approved these hours that they were taken without pay. And obviously, New Year's Eve is another holiday, but no one has plans for New Year's Eve, so we'd probably be open our regular hours.
I wanna bring up, uh, because these are both on Wednesday. And then Christmas Eve and, uh, Thanksgiving Eve. The transfer station, I think we should let them go home early as well, but not at two, obviously, they open at noon time. So I'm thinking maybe four or something like that.
But it would be unpaid, if they, yeah.
I think we should at least give them the option.
The option, I have the option, because, you know, they're, they're part-time workers, some would rely on those hours. And, uh, it's, it's nice during the week to have, uh, uh, a lot of people enjoy the evening hours, the residents. And so before I, I would say, just close them, I would get input from the, uh, the transfer station.
What I would do is, uh, put down that we. Give them the approval to do.
The flexibility.
Early closing.
If they depart wants.
Could I, could I just ask, I don't know if this has ever come up, um, you, you rightly point out that Wednesday's a late day, right, at twelve to eight. Being a day before a holiday, is there any impact if they've made that an early day, like a Tuesday hours? Eight to four?
I'll make them public, so I mean, we can try and notify the public in advance, but.
We do all kinds of notifications of the public of.
Oh, special hours, really?
Special hours for that day, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the day before a holiday, why wouldn't the public understand? They, they don't wanna go Christmas Eve at eight o'clock.
Ten to four, by the way.
Oh, that's right, yeah, okay. But they probably, oh, do they still work in the morning though, from eight to four, like, two hours of getting ready? That would be my thought is present that option to them.
I, I, I just said, rather present, I have to say, we, that sounds like a great idea, that's a good idea. That way, they're not being short of any hours. And they get to go home, uh, that day early, that evening early.
I mean, I guess if they, if they wanted to leave, I'll pay.
Because if we offer it to them, then we have to offer it to Friday. Were you saying something about pay or without pay?
No, I'm, I'm actually suggesting they just shift it to an earlier.
Work eight to four.
Uh, work eight to four instead of.
Then they'll be ready to open their doors on the. But they do open on Friday to get ready for.
Uh, no bearing on it, no bearing, it's, it's just, it just gives them a little more, uh, gets them home earlier that day, that's all it's gonna do. And they'll maintain their hours.
Shift the hours or, or closer.
Wouldn't probably be there till eight o'clock at night, definitely not at Christmas Eve, nobody's. Very few people are gonna go down there and dump their trash at eight o'clock.
I think as long as we post it in advance, it's gonna be closed at four.
I agree.
On Christmas Eve and Thanksgiving.
So special hours or close early, if they, whatever they decide.
A good idea, Dan.
Cause some guys aren't available to come in earlier on those different days, you know. Probably have other jobs.
It gives them the option too of, uh, if they wanna have the hours, they can come in.
Okay.
Then it gets into what about this department and that department?
We're gonna do the same thing, we're gonna quit early, so.
We're gonna put video cameras down at the highway garage.
Okay, okay.
We're having the police down here.
Keep things, keep things moving here. We're gonna go on to, um. Donna Dunn from the Historical Awareness Requests, funds to complete the shelving unit to be constructed. Uh, to store the historical material in the library, total to complete was forty-seven fifty with glass. There's currently a balance of twenty-two fourteen in the Harlan Noise Fund. The Dunbar Historical Awareness Committee would like to request a town contribution of twenty-five thirty-six to complete the project. I'm in agreement that glass doors would be better than the plexiglass doors and, um.
There's what, a four hundred dollar difference or?
Yeah, it was a huge difference.
You have the, quote the other stone.
Yeah, it was forty-three fifty with plexiglass and forty-seven fifty with glass.
Um, building and maintenance fund, is that, would that be, uh?
There's plenty of money in there to do this with.
We still have quite a few bills outstanding, but there's, that's not a lot of money, the two thousand, five hundred dollars.
The, um. There's also the, uh, the fact that we, uh, are supposed to be responsible to store that material properly as well. And, uh, there always is about a thousand dollars as a line item in the, um, taxpayers.
Four hundred, in that.
Only four hundred in there.
So you're talking about, she wants, she wants to move from the black cabinets here into a visual.
Yeah, where it can be usable, now it's only by appointment, people are gonna call, get an appointment with either the town clerk or herself to come in and go through it. Where, um, they will be available in that cabinet, the cabinet will be locked, but also, they can either meet them there and or Mary can open it.
Yeah, is, are the materials in the town clerk's office here?
It's in the tax collector's office, the black file cabinets.
Black boxes there now.
So currently it's by appointment only or?
Yes, and what, I think Donna's goal is to make copies and the copies would be available for public viewing on a more regular basis.
And I do, I do agree that they should be available, be looked at by people and their, their old historical items from town, people here.
Are they, is it items or is it books, is it a combination of all of that?
And the Tucker collection is one of it.
Mostly books, I see.
Mostly books?
Well, I've gone to the cabinet. There were a couple items, but the items got given to like the historical, um, committee. So.
You guys seem to indicate this money in the building maintenance fund, so, I don't, I don't have any opposition to this.
I'll make a motion that we use, uh, building maintenance money to fund the twenty-five thirty-six to complete the project with the glass doors.
I second that.
Motion been made, second all in favor? Aye. There's an email invitation from Fire Chiefs Scotland, uh, the fire department will be holding a recognition ceremony, I think we all received an email on this as well. To honor resident bystanders with the first responders in their outstanding efforts toward a medical emergency. Which resulted in a life saved. Ceremony will be held in the town hall, second floor, on Wednesday, November nineteen, doors will open at five thirty P M. And the ceremony will begin at six, is this for the horse?
No.
No.
No. It's a human life.
Yeah.
The horse will be up there.
The horse is, oh. Okay, I did put on my calendar and try and make it.
My calendar.
There's an email here, uh, from the Recreation Committee to relocate the tree discussed earlier in the year. See the photo with red dots for proposed location. There's the location, I'll show it to all three selectmen. What was the tree, I didn't remember.
It was, it was, uh, Don Lawson and Coach Ford, the bandstand and between the big maple, it was right there in the middle.
Now they.
No, I know, what, what kind of tree is that?
A Christmas tree of some sorts, some kind of. So that they would be able to decorate it without having to put one in the middle of the bandstand.
And it's already by that.
It's in the ground?
No, they wanted, they want permission to move it from.
They're gonna move it from here to here.
Proposed location that was given to the board and such.
So it's a temporary tree, it's not one planted?
It's gonna be planted.
Oh, it will be planted.
It will be planted. But they're, but they're changing the place.
Relocate the proposed location of the tree installation.
The circled yellow one is the new location.
That one or the other one, near the parking. So originally, this is where Don proposed it, right here. And they would like to put it here and here and on that small, it says that their arboretis says suggesting.
So there's two?
There's two, either or, which one would you prefer that they can use, they're asking permission to put one.
Why is one circled yellow?
That's his preferred choice, but you don't wanna do it there, it's a sister from the fire department, Chief Scollan says, shouldn't he be dealing with the fire.
Twenty years from now.
This could potentially, with plowing, it'll be a problem.
Which one, the one in the corner with the yellow?
Yeah, this is preferred, the one up by the building in the parking lot.
It's a secondary location, there are two spots that might work for a tree, Christmas tree.
I do think it's more out of the way over there by the building, but, uh, it doesn't bother me either.
You don't want it to be in the way of the walkway.
Yeah, it's on the side of the walkway.
It's gonna grow. Is there a walkway over there?
Yeah, it, yeah, it's actually right in the walkway.
The tree will.
No, it's on the side, walkway's shown there.
I, it is, it's, it's like right here, it goes like this, it's not shown on that.
I don't see that here, but.
You can't see the walkway right there?
No, we must have good glasses, cause, uh.
You see the walkway?
Yeah. What do you think this black stripe is going around the building? That's our walkway, it's painted.
Oh. It looked like, uh, a flower bed.
Well, that's our walkway.
Okay.
Could be either.
It's black pavement, that's our walkway.
They're just trying to get permission from the board if they.
It doesn't bother me either one.
I don't care either one.
I'm just concerned the line of sight, uh, row, on the road, it's close to the road now, is it gonna interfere with any line of sight for traffic control? We have two experts here, I think we should get their input here.
This way off the road, so I don't see any problem.
That's kinda close to the road and, as I said, as I was quoted, someone said, trees grow. Just, um, get your input and see what you think.
This is a choice or this choice?
Jeff has no problem cutting down trees that are broken.
You don't wanna.
Yeah, I, I can see us cutting one up there in that corner down pretty easily, uh, by Eric's house. Across the street from, not Eric's, but the other one.
It's vacant right now.
I'd keep it away from the parking area. Cause we push snow and stuff.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Okay, we agree.
Keep it away from the parking area.
Okay, just make sure they're.
Split the difference.
Consensus is preferred area.
And the yellow.
Okay.
Consensus, yeah.
I just think it's gonna be problematic for the parking area.
And it gets big?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there's a memo here from the town administrator, reminding full-time employees to use their outstanding leave. And, uh, it's been sent out to those employees now.
And, uh, just remember, uh, we can, by exception, they have to make a, make their case to us, we can allow, we can extend it until the January, we have done that in the past. But by exception, and they have to come before the board.
Do you wanna initial this?
Yeah.
Um, we also have a memo here from the bookkeeper, reminding the apartment heads to cut, um, for the cutoff date for the last minute credit card purchases and large purchases. Everything they can do to try and get that stuff spent out of their budget early on will help us out, cause we get statements far into the next year. It makes a mess of our budget. Thanks for getting those out, ladies. This is the town employee family obituary here, I didn't see anything in here, but, uh, we did have, uh. Some people from our employees had a deceased father this last week, was it?
Yeah, I think it's, is it attached to that, I think, or? It was, it was in that packet, but.
Will we be sending out something to them?
Yes, there is a, a request.
Did you wanna initial it?
Oh, God, I didn't see that, uh, that was before. Oh, did you get those in on the back or something?
Yeah, it was right on the back of this, the memo.
Too much you're holding out on me.
No, it had to be too much stuff.
Yeah, and the, and the obit, there's, uh, there's, a little flowers is an alternative way, way of sending something.
We'll look into that.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, discuss painting and the transfer station recycling, anybody else besides myself have a chance to get over and look at it?
I did not.
Okay, I did look at it and, um, I provided some notes to Lean earlier this week and she's following up. This painting was done by Certapro Painters, and I could see plenty of flakes on the ground that were done during pressure washing. Um, but it didn't look like any hand scraping was done on the two gate lines of the building where it was needed, or very little. What he did say, he noticed some hand scraping on the flat trim stock around the doorways, but not on any of the flat surfaces. Um, and they're flaking really heavy still, like, if you touch the flakes, they fall off, so.
And they painted all that?
Yeah. So, uh, that being said, I also called the other painter, I had driven by the highway department, but it was at, at, in the evening, I couldn't see it well. And that painter said that they spent, um, five guys, two days, scraping two sides each day by hand. Before they painted it, after they pressure washed it, and he said that. And he said that his, um, stuff has an oil base to it, he did put two coats on, and the primer's included in his oil-based product. So it was interesting to see how much scraping the other guy did, and that was the reason why we wanted to have this done to compare.
Compared, compared contrast, I think we, you've, uh, you've said, we've got a great contrast now.
So anyway, Lean's got this, and, uh, she's given this information to them, but they sent out some other questionnaire for it, so.
I will follow up with that again.
Have we paid?
Yeah.
Thank you. Are we, are we asking for, we asking for a, uh, a correction?
So if you.
I would ask. A follow, a correction, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, we scraped and paint.
Which sides of that would be?
The gable line where they do the parking of the trucks is the most important one, the other one has some small spots on the other gable, but they're not big, not a big deal compared to that.
Cause if you can touch them, they flake off now, that was not pre- properly.
Yeah, and it was pressure washed, I, uh, Woody did say they were, they're pressure washing, but it blows off most of the stuff, but not everything. Um. For the mailbox, the right way, we already brought that up, R F P's have been to the transfer station, CD multi-year contract.
Did he, that was something that was handed out, or was in my office this morning, and, um, it's a single page in there, Dave, it was underneath the picture.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, there's a lot of things missing on that, I don't know if that's just a temporary template, or?
What did, Woody developed that?
He just, it was just on my seat when I walked in today, so I don't know.
Well, I'll follow up with him and ask him if this is his, uh, thing, and, uh, would be nice, why don't you send me an email so I can see what you're saying is missing? And can you send this to me electronically, and I'll review it too?
Yeah.
So that's it, and the mailbox item.
What's missing, things from the vendor?
I'm not sure, Lean said I might have.
It's very, very general, and I'm not sure of this information.
It's a starting point though, I think if you speak just tweet.
Right. So I wasn't sure if it was, uh, if his final version, forty-one.
Oh, okay, so this is just the R F P piece, not?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's not any bid or anything yet.
Not basically a command.
Basically an ad.
So I don't know if he's expecting me to work with that, or how I need to proceed with it.
I'll ask him, let me know if you have some highlight areas that you think are missing.
I do, I have that definitely in mind.
We can go through, uh, get that straight away. Um, I'm gonna bring it back for other mailbox or, uh, other public comments at this time. Nothing else, okay, I'm gonna close the public meeting down, bring it back, uh, we're gonna try and do this now, because we're gonna go into a couple non-publics, Lean, do you have anything for us?
I just want to remind board that we've, um, set the date for a workshop on the personnel policy, it's gonna be Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, at two, at.
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty, on May.
Lunch provided.
Twelve thirty P M, on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Okay, anything else, Lean?
Nope.
PB and J.
Always looking for food, yeah.
Dana?
Uh, I have nothing.
Nothing, after all the stuff you did all this week?
No, we just, we made the hire this week, you.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, so there was a hire made for the building planning and zoning. I forgot about it.